I understand not being on there.
Hello, welcome to the Shippensburg area school district committee of the whole and I'll turn it over to Mr. August.
Thank you, Ms. Everly. So tonight we have several items on the committee of whole agenda, starting with facilities. Jason Urb is here for from SiteLogic to kind of give us what I believe will be perhaps our last formal update. So take it away, Jason.
Thank you. You can go to the next slide. All right. Quick agenda for my presentation here tonight, an update on the high school, middle school additions, project with some final photos. Going to go over the remaining activities, invoicing update, a change order update, as well as update on the project challenges. And number two there, I'm going to do a brief update on their high school guaranteed energy savings projects that I just completed. And also a brief update on the high school stadium. Next slide. Site work. They're still working on the middle school stormwater basin out front here. And also the basin out in front of the high school. It's expected, I'll update you here later, but expected that that'll be done by the end of the month. Next slide shows the middle school sidewalk getting wrapped up as well as the high school sidewalk. They're starting to find grade topsoil, get that cleaned up and ready to seed. Next photo is an overview for the bus loops. To the left, there's the middle school, to the right is the high school. And the next slide shows the high school parking lot. These were taken the first day of school. And the next slide is of the middle school parking lot. High school STEM lab addition. Guy next to your photo there, looking from the auditorium entrance. The next slide shows you the STEM lab. Next is the high school cooking lab. And finally, in that addition, the high school nursery childcare area. And the next slide shows you one of the two conference rooms that are in that addition as well. The high school music room addition. Next to your photo, looking from the stadium side. The next slide shows you the interior shots. That room is able to be divided into two classrooms if needed. There's an operable wall partition there. Next area is the middle school band room addition. And that's the exterior shot from Everly Drive. I wasn't able to get a final photo of this room. I wasn't able to get in there last week, but that was generally the space before they moved the furniture in. Next area is the high school secured vestibule. That's enclosed. And then the next one is in the high school outside the cafeteria. It's the Greyhounds Cafe. Next going over the schedule. Substantial completion was August 19th. That was on time. And final completion target is September 30th. Remaining activities. We're working on the punch list. The remaining site work activities that I showed you, landscaping, the exterior railing outside here at the middle school. High school lockers are expected to be delivered in early October, so that will push into October a little bit. As well as the high school and middle school acoustic sound panels in the music and band rooms. The high school secured vestibule is slated to be done by the end of next week and window blinds have been installed. Application summary through August of 25, 91%, which is where we want to be, about 10% for closeout. Kleinfelder, I finally got their backup from their June invoice. I sent that in today, so we're all caught up there. Cost issues. We're all up to date there. The only one outstanding is the time material for the vault. Which in the next slide is included in that contingency. So right now, the remaining contingency is over $172,000 savings coming back to the school. As well as potential allowance savings. Don't quote me on this yet, but it's great, about going to be $60,000 coming back to the school as well. So you add those two together, that's pretty good savings back to the school. Project challenges. High school water meter vault is ready to be installed. It's not affecting anything at this point. We just need to find three or four days where we can shut down the water to the high school. So it may run into Columbus Day weekend, it might be Thanksgiving area, but we're trying to fine tune those dates to complete that activity. Next one is the bright speed fiber has been resolved. The next slide, the location was completed right in time for the paving activities, so that didn't hold up. The drop off loop road from opening the first day of school. Before I get into the GISA project, on time, under budget, everything went great for this project, so I hope everybody's happy.
We should have recorded that.
It is recorded.
We clip that on the YouTube channel and run it on a loop, please?
High school GISA project, just a brief update. This is the one that happened, occurred over the past two summers. SiteLogic was the general construction for that. Just a brief overview of the HVC upgrades over two, over two summers. We installed five dedicated outside air rooftop units with gas heat. 14 new rooftop units with gas heat, 125 ton chiller. Upgraded all the automatic temperature control system, switchgear replacement, and then ceiling and lighting upgrades. Substantial completed on August 19th, again and on time. Commissioning of all the equipment has started. That'll go through the month of September, maybe October. But to get a full commissioning of all the units, we're going to have to come back next summer to test out all the air conditioning. Because we're just towards the end of the air conditioning season, it's hard to test everything. So we'll be back in the summer just to fine tune the, the air conditioning side. Punch list will be completed by September 30th. We're just about there. Next slide, just some general photos. To the left are the typical rooftop units we installed. To the right is the chiller that was installed in the cafeteria. The next slide, we upgraded the HVAC system in there. They used to be wall mounted unit ventilators. Now we went to a rooftop unit, installed some spiral duct. Where the old unit ventilators were, we installed some wood seating areas with solid surface material. Next slide is the kitchen serving area. Again, this had a ceiling mounted fan coil unit that was taken out. New rooftop unit, new ceiling and lights. Gymnasium, much of the same. These were air conditioning units that were up in the ceiling. They got moved up to the roof. Got new ceiling grid and new lighting. Next up is the stadium project, the punch list. SiteLogic went through the punch list, updated, gave it to the district, who since has given it back to ECI. We also recommend and no additional payments be made to ECI until further progress is made. We were told that the landscaping would start today, September 22nd. But I don't know if anything started.
No.
Is that?
No.
No? Well, there you go. Okay. Any questions?
I got a couple. The detention basin in the rear, is that a retention or is that actually a detention basin? Because the elevation seems to be really low. And I think it's gonna, I don't see any release. Is there a release, to release the water out of that back basin?
I think it's supposed to be a retention basin.
Do we need a fence around it? Just.
I'll have to ask the civil engineer. I would, I would assume if it was required by the borough that it would have been included it. But I'll have to ask KNW.
I'm pretty sure we're going to end up holding water in there. If not, we'll end up with another sinkhole. GISA project, that was a general, an energy savings deal.
Yes.
Do we have the necessary way to monitor to see if we are actually?
Our office actually monitors it. It takes utility bills from before we started and then we'll get utility bills throughout the next year or two and just show you the differences between the savings.
Is that ECI or SiteLogic?
SiteLogic will provide that information to the district.
So then in a year after you guys are gone, you're going to come back and give us an update?
There'll be constant communication.
How long does that last?
I'd have to double check on that. I don't know the contract that much.
Is that part of what commissioning means?
Commissioning is part of the guaranteed energy savings. Commissioning is when they go in and test all the units to make sure they're running the way they were designed to run. That includes all the temperature controls, programming, all that gets checked, just to make sure it's the way it was supposed to go in.
So that's part of it? Sorry.
No, you're good. You're good. I wanted to, well, that's fine. Thank you. The, I wanted to ask for somebody to give me an idea on, how is the parent loop working?
So we have people that might be able to speak to that. All the feedback I've received, Mr. Nago, has been it's, it's, I believe one of the quote was a million times better. Having run through it myself at peak hours, especially on the middle school side with the parent drop off, mu- much, much improved.
Busing companies like the parent loop, did it separate the traffic? Oh, it's okay.
Just as a parent who sometimes drives it, I just, there's just so much less pedestrian traffic down there by, sorry, Mr. Bard's business. In that, at that intersection, it's, it just seems a lot safer.
The only difficulties that have been reported are when people don't follow the rules. You know, I've heard one or two instances where people have said, you know, it works great unless someone doesn't do what they're supposed to do.
That's correct. The last thing I wanted to say about the parent loop, have we sent anything to Senator Mostriana who helped us get a grant for that?
Not yet. We can certainly, yeah.
I did send him a letter today, but it wasn't about that.
Anything else for Jason? So that last line, just so everyone understands, on time, under budget. Yes, sir? Okay.
On time, under budget.
I think they did a good job.
Very good project.
Compared to the other job with the junior high, I think he did an excellent job.
Great, thank you. Appreciate it.
You know, I've been on your back.
Thank you.
This is maybe a Caleb, what happens to that extra funding?
So, well, I mean, I can answer some of it. It's, it's available for other projects. You know, we can use it to, I mean, basically, it's available for other projects and, you know, if you want to expand on that.
So when you borrow it, you have to give a reasoning for the borrowing. And usually it has to stay within that umbrella, but usually the umbrellas are pretty broad. You make them abroad, so you can kind of use them for different projects.
So it could like, does it go back like into the fund balance and then we?
No, this is a completely different fund.
Okay.
This is just construction related.
So we, I mean, we could use it for capital projects, I guess is a better way of saying that, you know.
Is there, is there like a use it or lose it kind of thing where we have to spend it in a certain amount of time or anything like that?
There, you want to spend it within probably three or four years just because of interest rates being so high with these bonds, since they're tax exempt. Can only make so much interest on this money until you have to pay back the IRS on interest earnings. So usually that market is like three to four years.
Yep. Fortunately, I think if you were to ask him or anyone else, there's a number of needs that we can spend that money on.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure.
So we don't hit that timeline.
Is that current, where does that money sit? It's not in the fund balance or does it?
Bond. It's in a, it's in a different fund. It's fund 39. It's separate than the general fund.
In our coffers?
In our, yeah, in our, it's in our bank, Pliggett account, separate from the general.
Yep. Okay, moving on through facilities. These two items have been reviewed by the facilities committee. One is a change order to finish up installing the lights. The other is the track settlement repairs. I think I gave details on this in my update. But, you know, KNW was at the meeting on Wednesday along with our solicitor. Upon further review from KNW, you know, they are saying that, looking at the additional data, the, the original settlement issue falls under our responsibility as a district to fix or take care of. So, you know, with that information, the committee recommended authorizing the payment of the other half of that contingent upon release of, of them fixing the, the paving slight in day indentation. Any questions on those two?
You want any questions or?
Sit.
We want to make a, make a statement before we do, we're not voting or nothing, just a comment. I, I told a lot of people that I was never going to vote for that. But it came down to a point of and the superintendent, we don't want to take a chance of another year of this soccer player not playing on that field, not playing.
Soccer, track, track, track.
We don't want the third year of our students not having an opportunity to play track at home. That's why I told him I vote. So the people I talked to, I said I wouldn't, that's why I did.
Okay, thank you. Budget and finance. Mr. Barwin, you want to give us a sad update on the state budget?
There's still, you know, not much of an update from last meeting still. They're still working through, working through the budget.
The other item there is the FLC joint authority membership, based on the appraisal of the property, which came in at $4 million. Our share as, as a district would be north of $600,000. A little frustrated is maybe not the right word, but when we set the original numbers, they were lower and that set some expectations. Having that come in at that number, you know, certainly is, is different than what was presented those, at the meetings. Having said that, administratively, financially, and through the student services, we still believe that this is the best path forward. Buying into the Franklin County Learning Center not only gives us equity in the building, so it's not money that we're necessarily losing. It's still there and it gives us access to those programs, which currently we are being attritioned out of. And so, you know, we went from 19 slots to 12 slots currently. So without this move, once those students, you know, leave those programs, we will not have those spaces guaranteed at Franklin County. So I wanted to put that on committee of the whole, so that you, you know, you and the public were aware. At the upcoming meetings, we'll have some agreements to review, if that's the step that we want to move forward on. So, questions on that?
Is that? Is that a one time?
That is a one time buy-in. We're, we're basically like buying parts of the building.
Right.
And, you know, that money is going to be divided to the other districts, you know, to wedge us into the ownership.
And is that going to be in next year's budget or this year's budget or where does that fall?
So we could either take it out of fund balance or we could work it into the budget for next year.
Sorry.
No.
Did I say something about the state?
Yes.
It's not going to be nice.
Okay.
No, I just, I mean, the article that Caleb sent us today. All the senators played golf last week. And both parties. And, and then that was, and in the house, they spent a lot of their time last week. Um, also doing fundraising, both parties, uh, and I wrote a fairly snarky email to all four of the representatives and senators that represent the district here. Just begging for them to, um, pass the budget. Uh, fortunately, I think we're doing okay. But that's not indefinite. I mean, we're having to make plans as Caleb pointed out, some of us today. Um, so just, I don't know, if anyone from the state watches our lively YouTube channel, you know, it's time for you to do your job and pass the budget. We, we need it.
Definitely disappointing in that we had a lot of indications that, that the budget would be settled last week, um, but there must have been some last minute snags um, that stretched it out again. So, um, hope springs eternal, uh, and we'll, we'll hopefully see what happens.
I have a question for Caleb.
Sure.
And it's a kind of a repeat of what I had asked before. Um, how long, since, since our cash flow is based on local taxes and that comes in during this timeframe?
Correct.
And we have fund balance. How long can we hold until we actually need to seek other means of cash flow in such as borrowing? Uh, and, you know, so we have an idea because there's going to be a delay till we get it on agendas, till we get it passed, till we go out for. Where do you think we're at?
So talking with PFM, they assist us with the borrowing. Um, we wouldn't have to borrow until March timeframe. So to get that on the agenda would be, we'd revisit that in January to, um, get some things on the agendas.
Three months to go.
Right. And, and just as an aside, like, you know, as, as far as the, the curve of districts that are, are struggling, we would be on, on the side that's in a better, much better shape than many of our colleagues around the Commonwealth who, who are going into panic mode, um, as we speak. So.
Just wanted the board to know that.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it Kirk. Thank you.
I, I think it's worth noting too that if we do, and I know other districts have had to do this, if we do have to take out a loan just to keep the doors open, that incurs interest which then gets passed on to taxpayers. So it ends up being nothing more than a, an increase in taxes for our constituents. And so it, it's kind of all bad news all around.
The other side of that is if we draw down fund balance, we lose interest-bearing accounts. So we lose income and we're burdened with an expenditure from the state.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'll just add one more thing. That's all like both great points made all the way around, but I just feel like I say this every time this comes up. We were required by state law to pass our budget by June thirtieth, not knowing what money we would have. And now we go to the end of September and we still don't know. And, uh, I personally, I've had an issue with that for four years. It's incredibly tough to pass a budget, uh, not knowing what money you will get. Um, so again, I will encourage all of those local lawmakers to, uh, rally together and let's get this across the finish line.
It's, it's a really good example of hypocrisy.
It is my thought that all districts should say enough is enough. Stand your ground. We're not passing a budget until you get your act together. Call it. It's, it's a mess. Can't do this.
Um, up next we have transportation, you know, based on the conversations that happened at the, the last meeting round and questions that, um, many members had around the RFP, um, rather than jump out at it even though, you know, it had been approved to go out through a committee recommendation, um, I, I pumped the brakes on that a little bit, um, and invited our, all three of our vendors are here, um, who've been waiting patiently to, to talk and be made available. So before we introduce them, I just want to say again publicly, thank you all for the service that you're giving the district in comparison to other, um, you know, districts. We are high on the hog and, and really, you know, not experiencing the same problems. And, and that's obviously a function of, of you guys and, and the commitment that you have to, uh, us and our, our students. So, you know, from the bottom of my heart, I'm, I'm glad to be a superintendent that is, is not getting those calls about late buses or, you know, bad pickups and, and, uh, you know, we've had a fairly, I think, normal year. Um, and perhaps even maybe smoother than, than, you know, in the past. So thank you all for, for that. We hope that, you know, we are eager to keep that, uh, keep that rolling in the future. So, um, you know, at this point, uh, you know, I, I wanted to, to have the board members since, you know, they took the time to be here that tonight, um, if there are specific questions that you have for our vendors, if, if the vendors want to come up and address the board, um, you're welcome to. I mean, I think basically what we're looking at is, you know, like, um, you know, just y- your perceptions of the RFP process, um, how much of a burden it is to you, um, you know, any, any concerns that you have that the, the, the board might want to hear, um, you know, as we go. So, um, any board members want to throw out questions for our, our providers here?
I'd like to ask a question of the district first. Um, in the past, our bus contractors, have we had any major problems with the bussing that they've provided us?
Well, I've only been here, I've only been here three years. Um, I would say that, you know, we've had excellent service, um, you know, from, from my perspective, you know, all companies have been, been working with us and, uh, you know, we've not experienced again the problems that others, others have had to deal with.
I've not heard many complaints either. I've heard mostly all good.
Well, and I would clarify, there's, and I think the providers would agree, there's always complaints when it comes to transportation. Um, what I would say is non-standard complaints about transportation, um, you know, systemic or, or structural problems as opposed to, you know, my, I don't like where my bus stop is and, and, and those things.
Yeah, I understand. And even through the coldest of winter last year when it was like low zero, I don't think we had any bus failures from any of our contractors. Every one of them got buses out and that's not an easy task, keeping up with that. So kudos to all of you for that. And, you know, I wanted to bring up initially when we took the initial, uh, talked about this. My impression was that we needed to go out for an RFP and that is not the case, correct?
So I, I think we communicated that through the previous, uh, transportation committee last year. Um, it was a recommendation. We've not gone out for ten years. Um, and, and so, yeah, I, I, if, if that was a, you know, something that the board, individual board members didn't, weren't aware of, um, you know, we, we do not have to. Um, and, and the beauty of this type of RFP is we can go out to RFP and then talk to these folks directly and negotiate, you know, straight up.
I think our contract currently, we can negotiate with them straight up now, can we not?
Yes.
So.
I think an RFP also aligns like what the district needs, um, or certain asks that we have that they can say, hey, we can provide that to you. This would be in that number. I think it's also important that the board recognizes that we literally just adopted a new committee, um, the efficiency committee, like is there a certain expenditures that we have that maybe we could get a better price on? And I can't think of a better way to make sure that we're negotiating to get the numbers we can than utilizing one of the committees that we have to look, is there cost savings?
To be honest with you, I'd like to see us, meaning a committee, efficiency committee, meet with them instead of going out for an RFP. Because if we open this up, I'm of the opinion that if it ain't broke and they gave us good service and our numbers ain't bad, why do I want to do that? But I'd rather meet with them to figure out how I can get best bang for my buck from them. Are there things that they can help us with?
So I, I would speak to the RFP kind of gives them information about what's important to the district, um, and what kind of general structure, you know, we're looking for moving forward. It allows them to see.
We can do that through negotiations.
Correct.
I, for me, I want to hear what kind of problems does this present to your companies? What are you going, is this, what kind of dilemma is this going out for bid? What is the dilemma that's on you? I want to know what the dilemma, if we've sent this out to bid and everybody, how does that affect your companies, not knowing whether you're going to get the bid or not? For the future.
If, if you're going to speak, if you don't mind coming up to the mic.
We don't bite.
And we don't really have a very big YouTube audience.
Somebody, somebody come up here and speak.
I'm Don Boynowski from Boyo Transportation and, you know, thanks for having us tonight. You, you mentioned about the RFP process and, and what's it look like? I have a list of other districts that went out for the RFP. None of them saved money in the last four years.
What districts did you go out and look at?
Um, on my sheet here, I, I can get you more districts, but Hanover, Big Spring, um, West Shore, Carlisle also went up.
Because they chose the higher, like they would know who was the lowest bidder and they didn't go with the lowest bidder? Is that what you're saying?
No, no. So, so for example, Hanover Public Schools went out for bid last spring, okay? They spent one million seventy thousand in twenty-four, twenty-five. They tried to negotiate and ended up going for bid. Their budget this year is one point seven six. It's almost seven hundred thousand more.
Can you tell us why, why that went up?
Um, have any idea? Insurance, I mean buses are, they keep going up, pricing and everything just keeps going up.
What about driver retention?
Driver salaries are going up. So.
Why aren't you having trouble finding drivers for the other companies? Why, why aren't you?
Cause I got Arlene.
But it doesn't seem like we hear the rationale.
Cause we pay them well. We give them good flat rates. They're comfortable in this district. Um, they're happy driving these kids.
All right, Big Spring.
So, so our, our retention, what's our retention rate? Like we, we maybe added one or two drivers this year, but the rest were all back.
What about the other companies? It's about the same? All right. Now what about Big Spring? They're right next to us. They presented out for bid. They got a company, what company did they hire in?
Price.
And they're where from where?
Pittsburgh.
How, or they hired the drivers they had or they had trouble getting drivers?
They're struggling to get drivers.
I was told, I was referred that they may be dropping, bringing drivers from other places?
Correct.
Into, into Big Spring?
Correct.
Like maybe Cumberland Valley or Chippensburg are bringing people in there. Say their drivers coming from Scranton. Well, we know why they're having trouble with the routes.
I mean, you, you're, you're drivers that drive from me live in your district and they know your kids and they're very comfortable here.
You other companies don't want to say nothing? You're, you're all up to.
Thank you for having us. I'm Devin Freeze with DL Freeze. Um, you don't have to repeat what he just said, um, Boyo, um, cause I think his stats are, are pretty solid and correct. Um, you know, wh- whether you as a board decide to do RFP or negotiate with us with contracts, you know, from an employer, I would suggest doing it in a timely manner, meaning put it in and out sooner than later. Um, and I say that because um, I have sixteen routes down here and if we, I would lose it, then I'll also lose sixteen employees that, uh, I'd either have to replace them somewhere else or they're off. Um, and I, and I just don't want, wait the last minute to make that call to sixteen people saying, sorry, I don't have a job for you. So that, so if you could, if you do decide to go that route, you know, I would appreciate just getting it out there sooner than later. That's all. Um, uh, I, there were some, I had trouble hearing, so I apologize. Maybe you guys address this, but I think when this was first started here on the transportation, there was some question too about doing both. Um, but I'm not sure I quite understand that, but if you're doing the, uh, RFP and the contract, is that something you're going to put out there that everybody bid on? And then if you don't like the numbers, then come back and negotiate the contracts with us or somebody else or somebody new? Um, that's a question, don't need to answer it now, just something, and maybe I misinterpreted that. Um, and, and Big Springs, um, they are struggling for drivers to touch on that. Um, and I know that because they're begging me to take care of the sports trips. They're having trouble. They can't do it. Um, so, uh, you know, they're getting by, but it, it is a huge struggle for them. Um, and they're spending, spending a lot more money.
On that point, uh, if it gets a little later and it, you feel that you're not going to get the contracts, are you going to go looking for other districts like you're saying, your Big Springs, Cumberland Valley?
Absolutely.
So, so if we don't do anything or jerk.
No, I wouldn't do that. No, we, we enjoy being here. We want to be here. Um, you know, Randy and his whole staff have, have been great to work with and, uh, you know, the, in, in transportation, there's never a dull moment. I mean, it's a, it's a revolving ball that changes frequently. Um, a- and, uh, you know, I'm sure I'm speaking for the other contractors too. I mean, we want to be here on that. But, uh, I mean, there is, um, again, we all could probably sit here and name five or six different school districts that have reached out to us, you know, begging, come, come, you know, we need fans, we need drivers, we need buses, you know, but, uh, you know, I, I'm very content to be here. I have routes in Chambersburg also.
Do you want to start taking routes in Waynesboro?
No, I won't. They're in Waynesboro.
They're, they're, they're back there. So you are looking at other places. So is they?
I'm not looking.
But there are opportunities in other places. So, so if they have need drivers, you can fill that spot.
I feel like.
Or bus routes.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Bussing company.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, two districts that didn't bring in, quote, big guy, you know, that still have private contractors out there. Yes, there are districts out there that need contractors. You know, and touching on, on the vehicle pricing, you know, I, I took Freeze Bus Transportation ever for my father four years ago and, um, you know, it's, it's no secret that then the buses were a hundred grand. One oh-two, one oh-three, I think was the last bus that was bought, you know, they're a hundred and fifty-eight now. You know, they went up almost sixty percent in four years. That's what we're fighting. You know, and then they continue to keep buying buses. At a state formula, it doesn't work. I mean, it truly just does not work. I mean, and for us to be able to pay drivers and keep them, you know, just like what I was saying, you know, we need, I think us three here are the contractors with the, um, pay that we're paying our drivers. Um, it's why we're getting them back each year, you know? Uh, I think we replaced one or two this year and like, just like you said, I'm not sure about now the in-mat, but, uh, I feel like they've done the same thing. I mean, and I don't think too many people can say that.
Who else would be trying to do three in this area would be?
I'm sorry?
Who else would be in this area beside you three are in a position to bid for this, bid for this contract?
I don't want to speak for anybody else.
But you know sizes, I mean, who?
Well, um.
I don't think nobody's coming up, up in the, West Shore's coming down this way.
Yeah, I mean.
I don't think my Perry County. And I don't think Perry County is sending anybody. You three represent Franklin County, Adams County not sending anybody. So who's going to be, unless we get the Giants like that Big Spring got and come from someplace else? The service is not good, not going to get good.
Correct. I agree with you a hundred percent. But yeah, no, that's it. Any questions for me? Like I said, I appreciate you inviting us because I, I, we do appreciate that and enjoy being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to ask a question. I just, we're, uh, not experts in transportation. Um, is, is it, you all are, um, is the, is the RFP process something that is out of the ordinary or, uh, I, I, I would like to know your stance on, you know, pros and cons of, uh, RFP.
Natalie Heck from Heckmires and, um, I've been in doing this for forty-three years, so I'm not an expert in it either as far as the money side. Cause I don't understand the RFP. We never went through the RFP. We did it in Greencastle. But in my experience of watching it, it's going to go, you're, if you're looking for, are you, that's guess my question to you guys. Are you just looking for cheaper service? Is that the reason to put out the RFP? I mean, if you, I mean, this gentleman stated that he's happy with our service. We're in Chambersburg, Matt and I are in Chambersburg and Waynesboro and we've, we've had Heckmires for twenty years and to you guys pay the, the least of where we work as far as like field trips bidding out. And so whenever, if we're going to RFP and we bid, we're not, we can't do it for cheaper than what we're doing. Like Devin said, I mean, prices of everything is going up and to stay competitive with our drivers, we have to pay them more. And with state formula, we do appreciate that you pay us higher than state formula, because then that, that does help with the fuel cost. It's with straight, straight, straight state formula, nobody does that anymore. I mean, like in Franklin County, I mean, there's no school districts that just pay because we, we need help with the expenses with our drivers and everything.
Coming from my point of view, I'm not looking for necessarily cheaper, I wanna make sure that you paid enough for driver retention, service, and can meet all of the needs of the district. And my personal opinion is, you guys are like the right arm of the school. And if we send you out for RFP and we get a big guy that comes in, that's a problem. So I personally, I'm not speaking for the board, would rather sit down and negotiate and say, how can we run the most effective, efficient bussing operation possible?
And we'd be willing to do that, like how Heckmires got into Shippensburg, I know if yous were all here, when we came in, we always needed help. And they called us and we, we provided a bus and a driver to finish out the year, then the next year we did another one, and that's how we grew. And we've always told them that, like, we were like the wingman came in, we'll help you out, but we weren't here to take it from them, like, and I felt like we worked good together, because if we needed help, I mean, like, same with field trips, and then when Devin was invited to, to join, I mean, like, cause then we can all work together with.
Aren't we all on the same radio frequency?
Yes, I mean, we can hear each other, so we.
If there's anything, we're working together on the same radio, I mean, thank you, you've done great.
Yeah, we, we all work together with, like Devin said too, with Randy's staff, I mean, we all have a good working relationship, but that's why, I mean, like for us, when we hear RFP, yes, it scares us, because then our drivers, we don't want our drivers to hear it, because then they're gonna start looking somewhere else, because they don't know if we're gonna be here next year. So we don't want our employees knowing that there's an RFP coming up, because they might go somewhere else, and they hear Big Springs needs some help, so they're gonna move somewhere else if they don't wanna work, I mean, cause they don't wanna work for a big company, they like the small mall and pop shops.
Have, have we sat down and talked to you, companies on a basis and try to bargain prices or anything, has anybody in the school district talked to you about that bargaining? About what, what we can do and what you can do to help each other? Has any of you? Okay.
To bargain, like use an example, what do you mean?
I mean, like, sit down and negotiate, let's say negotiate the prices of different things.
Well, we did that, like, every, we've been, since Heckmires have been down here, we do, yeah, we do a year-to-year contract is how.
What, do we, we talk to you and ask you what you're, what you want and what you need and what we want, what we need? Or we just send you, or do we just send you a contract?
We would communicate, yes, if we didn't like it, then we would say we would like this and, yeah, I mean, we went back and forth the last contract.
Okay.
Yes.
Just to be clear, if, if it goes to RFP, we do not have to accept the contract from that, correct? Or the?
I'm looking at Randy, I believe.
We don't have to accept, okay, because I think everything has been good now, I guess I, let me just go back. In terms of retention of drivers, can we also have in the RFP, and it may be in there now, I know I asked about it before, like, I don't, there's an official term for it, I don't know, but current drivers, and let's say it goes out and big company comes in, can't there be stipulation? What's that?
I don't know.
It's a retention thing, I don't know what the official is, I think you could put something in there that says, hey, we want these people who are employed to have the first right to positions. Does that sound correct?
It's a problem that I have with us, Levi. These people have been with us forever. I am a single, I am a, a single contractor that works for basically one or two companies. I understand the loyalty. If I call any one of them and say, hey, we have a problem, or Randy calls, they're gonna drop everything. Come help us out. That's the problem I have with this, because they've built their businesses, mall and pop businesses, based on income generated from local districts. They each have shops within reach, they, their buses are on the road, they don't, aren't having driver retention. I'm sure they're having some child problems on the buses. That's, that was the point of this, that's why I wanted to try to get together with them, to say, okay, you know, last year when we were talking about the RFPs, our attorneys, our professionals advised us to raise the insurance. You know? I have five million dollar liability insurance. That's expensive for me, just me. They, if they, if, if we have asked them to increase their insurance, and I'm, I'm not sure exactly if I know what the minimums, minimums are, not real clear on the insurance required for the, for the bussing companies, it's gonna, it'll force them into positions and will have to increase their pay to us. They're in a position where they can negotiate, if we ask them for an increase, for an increased insurance, then we'll have to negotiate with them to raise the pay. I wanna know, since we are a district that is not flush with cash, we're very, I mean, we do pretty well, what can they help us with to keep our costs in check? You know, if we go out for RFP, somebody might come in and beat them. And promise you the world, seen it before. That's the point.
Say a couple, two or three more things. If it does go for RFP, I, I would request that you guys give us an answer later than sooner, I know he wanted sooner, but if, if we had an answer like January first that somebody else took the contract, we're gonna lose our drivers, and you guys are gonna lose coverage on your routes, and January through June is gonna be tough on all of us. So if you made a decision January first, I took XYZ Contractor, all our drivers are gonna know you got XYZ Contractor coming in, and they're gonna exit us. The other thing, I, where you said about my drivers continuing on next year with somebody else, I would like to keep my drivers.
Totally understood, cause didn't you, you acquired drivers from Macbeth and Sons years ago?
Yes, yes.
That's how I knew that this, so many, some of our bus drivers have been bus drivers for twenty-five and thirty years for multiple different companies. And I think you, and this is before my time on the board, obviously, but you came into Shippensburg schools, you were not here prior to having, winning a contract.
Now, we had done special needs, my, I took over for my father in, in two thousand and four, I came from General Electric, and they were all about bidding, so we were bidding, bidding school jobs, you know, selling the electrical equipment, so I'm, I'm very familiar with why you bid and.
Yeah, yeah, but the bussing company came in.
So, so we, we started in special needs in Shippensburg, just van work in two thousand. We had that contract two thousand through two thousand and five. And then the IU took that portion over. The big buses we took over in two thousand and thirteen.
Okay.
Twelve, twelve thirteen was the first year.
And retained many of those drivers.
We did, yeah. And bought a lot of those buses from Mike.
So I just have a general comment. I, I mean, I think, I think there's been lots of good reasons said to, like, sort of keep the status quo, renegotiate these contracts, you know, re-up them, whatever. And that may be the right answer. But if I sort of step back and think about this process as an objective outsider, and think of, you know, the school district as a public entity, which it is, and, and tried to sort of design some sort of best practices strategy for dealing with, you know, long-term contractors, I think an RFP process periodically would definitely be part of that. And as we've, you know, said before, we haven't, you know, had an RFP for our transportation for, you know, ten plus years or whatever. It does not, an RFP process does not commit us to the lowest cost, like, you know, bidder. And even at that point, there are certainly, you know, like, we can say, like, well, there's really good reason to stick with what we have or some variation of what we have, you know, after having gone through that process. But that process, I think, is really important for transparency, for, you know, sort of good governance. And, and so, you know, I, by, I don't know, supporting an RFP process, I don't want that to be understood at all as, you know, a knock on the service of our providers presently, because it isn't. It's, it's just, you know, a matter of, of good public governance.
What do we, what, I wanna, what are we trying to accomplish with the RFP? Some, I, I know, is anything other than money?
Well, I think money is a big part of it, but, you know.
Anything other than that, other than money?
I mean, I think money's the major point, yeah.
Okay, that's what, that's what I'm trying, that's what I'm determined, money is the reason we're going through the RFP.
I think, but I think what Nathan is saying is there's a level of transparency that kind of comes with an RFP.
Right, so, right, so you're, you're sort of, you know, I mean, you are in fact, but also signaling that the district is, you know, open with its financial decision-making, transparent. And even if, you know, if, if we, if we get a lower bid, but, you know, it's from some outside company and we have reason to believe that they can't provide the same level of service, then we may be, we may be inclined to pay a premium to get what we have had already, right, to keep the status quo. But at least then we will know, like, we will have some sense of like, yeah, like, this is the premium that we are willing to pay to get what we're, you know, what we're used to. Without that RFP process, you don't know.
And Donnie?
I wanted to make one other point.
Sure.
I don't know that a five-year deal is, is great for either side, because we've seen what happened in the last five years. I've came to you for some help. I, I think five years in this economy, you're talking about, like, straight up pricing, maybe a, a two-year option? Or a three-year, I mean, five years is a long time.
So you're, you're suggesting like a negotiated?
Right, sit down.
Like a renewal?
And say, hey, look.
And then do RFP in two years?
Let's wait till this smoothes out and levels off. You, I mean, your prices, you go RFP, I, I strongly believe your prices are gonna go up. I, I haven't seen anybody's that went down.
Well, but prices are going up anyway, right, I mean, every new contract that you negotiate, even with current customers, I'm sure the prices are going up.
They're going up.
Right.
Yeah, double digit.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, and that's, as you, as you pointed out, that's the nature of the, you know, economic situation that we're in right now, that's the economic climate. I was gonna, you know, Fred, I, I should also say, like, I don't know what I don't know, right, I don't, I don't know sort of what the, you know, what the, what the needs of the transportation department are in particular, like, when we get down to like specifics, I can imagine that there are other things that, you know, other priorities that might be outlined in an RFP process. From my perspective as a school director, like, you know, the, the cost is the major concern, but certainly there may be other concerns of which I'm not aware. And I'm sure in the process of writing an RFP, those concerns would be outlined. And that gives providers an opportunity to address them. In ways that we may not be aware of.
Did you not hear them say that they need some insurance about the future? And negotiating with a RFP is not a negotiating future. That they want to know, or they're gonna be here a year from now, before they got buses, when they got drivers. And so.
Which is why we should do this earlier than later, we should, we should be right on it, I mean, I, that, that's, that's why we didn't do it in the spring.
I only got one vote, and that's all I got, now like I say, I'll, I'll be willing to bet.
Right, I mean, you're bringing up valid concerns and I'm trying to address them, like, I mean, I just, you know, I, I think doing it in the spring wasn't the right call, it was like, there was, it was way too short of a window, and that's why we pushed it off until the fall, cause that would have been the right time. But now we're pushing up against the window again, like, we, we gotta do it. I think we gotta pull the trigger on it quickly or not do it. And if we decide not to do it, that's fine, I guess, but I'm just saying that I, I would think it would be appropriate for us to do it.
It sounds like to me, anybody that sent out an RFP to you from the other districts, it ended up costing them more money. I didn't hear, I didn't hear anybody save money by, by sending, sending one out.
I guess my question is, is, is that a function of the fact that an RFP went out, or are just costs gonna go?
It's timing, it's timing, it's a lot to do with timing, I, I can give you a lot of data from these other districts. What these bids look like and what they look like compared to what you're paying. And do your, do, do your due diligence with those numbers, say, oh, well, this is, you know what I mean, see, see the data that's out there, I mean, there's a lot of data you can use.
I guess my question is, is there something in the that's, that results from the RFP process that would by its nature increase our costs? Does the RFP process itself make, is, is there something that would happen in that process that would potentially make that a more expensive?
It just depends what your ask is versus what we have in the contract, so if you're asking for something more.
So one thing is, is another contractor comes in, just like they did with Deitch. Deitch had the contract in Big Spring for sixty-seven years. And a lot of the drivers did not go with the new company, but the new company that came in had to buy all new buses as well. So whenever a company you come in, Don's not gonna sell his buses to this new company, he's gonna take them and work them at one of his other. So that's gonna increase your cost as well.
So I, I, I just wanna be clear, I don't think any of us are interested in changing our providers. I, I think it's more of a function of trying to follow recommendations of good governance and transparency. But if, if there's something wrong with the RFP process itself, then we should know about it.
I mean, Donnie, just a question for me, like, wouldn't, wouldn't an RFP process, given our circumstances, really be the foundation of a contract negotiation? Like, I mean, like, aren't you gonna answer all these questions at certain?
But, but he, he may say that, or you guys may say, we want a five, you know, we want a five-year bid, we want, you know, different things that we, someone may want a five-year, somebody may only want two years, you know what I mean, like, some might want seven, does that make sense? As far as price, I get the price.
You haven't explained it well.
Right?
I, I, I mean, to, to my mind and maybe to the mind of the board, like, like, I see the RFP as like, like, here's, here's where we think we can meet Shippensburg. Like, here's what we can do for Shippensburg at these costs, and then the board, like, doesn't that, and I could be wrong, doesn't that like maybe jumpstart the negotiation process? Because we already have all these questions answered and numbers applied to them, so when we go to, to do the contract, like, we have a starting spot to, to know where you guys are collectively? I mean, am I, am I wrong in that?
I, I.
Maybe I'm not understanding the, you know, the complete process.
Yeah. I, I think it could be a point, I think you could get to that point either way, depending what, I mean, you guys as a team, do you want one contractor, you want three contractor? I mean, that's something you guys have to decide.
I mean, I get that piece, but.
Yeah, that's, yeah, so. And then how long do you want a five-year deal, do you want a two-year deal, a one-year renewal, to see what it looks like? No, it's, you got, you got a lot of pressure because it's, it's a tough market.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not like two thousand and fourteen where you put a bid and you're guaranteed to get low prices, it's, it's a lot different than that.
Three-year, it's not like, I mean, a three-year contract would be seen like reasonable, because the way these developments are building up, their routes are gonna change, the population, demographic is gonna change, so we may have to hire more people, they may have to hire more people to accomplish what we need for transportation within the school district. So, I didn't know, I didn't pay attention to the five-year, but I think a three-year is the most we should shoot for. Cause they're things we want and probably things they're gonna want.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other final question, again, thank you so much for coming out this evening, appreciate the information you provided to the board. Again, thank you for a smooth start to the school year. And, you know, again, we appreciate you, so thank you. So at this point, you know, negotiations committee, you know, update is, you know, there hasn't been an agreement reached yet, and at this point, we'll conclude the committee of the whole and go to executive session. reached yet, and at this point, we'll conclude the committee of the whole and go to executive session.
Yeah. Not, not, not right now. I mean, I'm really excited that where I'm at right now is. It's, um, Mechanicsburg Keystone. MLS next, so it's, um, it's like the, so the MLS has their, like, pro division, it's kind of like their academy teams. A lot of college kids.
So, so it's basically, uh, showcase type?
Yeah, almost like that, yeah. Yeah, exactly. That's, that's the main goal right there. I mean, I'm really sad that I'm not playing the high school sport. Yeah. No, it's soccer, so it's like it's weird separate.
Nah, I think it's the same a lot of times.
Yes.
It's not everywhere. The other, for travel.
Yeah. I thought the same thing. My high school could have not happened, but. Every single time I see him, I'm like ducking my head down.
About the same time, you get somebody else.
Yeah. He's doing pretty well out there.
I went to softball.
Wait, so you're about, tell her to play softball, is that the only thing she's in high school?
Yes. She was playing volleyball.
Yeah.
Five, one and a half is, uh, was not a big.
Oh, okay. I was gonna say, I know a lot of girls actually didn't play this year. So I was gonna say. Oh, that's.
Sanders.
They can't wear your shirt.
We're just waiting for one member to return.
Hello, and welcome to the Shippensburg Area School District Planning and Action Meeting. Prior to the start of this meeting, the Board did meet in an executive session to discuss contract matters. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jim Bard.
Here.
Mr. Mike Carey.
Here.
Mr. Levi Kressler.
Here.
Dr. Nathan Goats.
Here.
Dr. Michael Lyman.
Here.
Mr. Kirk Knogel.
Here.
Mr. Fred Scott.
Here.
Mr. Darren Donovan.
Here.
Mr. Steph Everly.
Here.
And Mr. Leo Blom.
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we begin our deliberations this evening, let us once again be reminded of our duty to represent all of the children of this school community regardless of age, sex, race, or creed, and regardless of need or ability. This meeting is being livestreamed and uploaded to the district's YouTube channel. May we now have a moment of silence to reflect on our thoughts, plans, and actions on behalf of the students in the Shippensburg Area School District? And may we also have a moment of silence for Mary Jane Foglesong, our graduate of the Shippensburg Area High School. Mr. August, are there any changes to this evening's agenda?
No, ma'am.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda as listed?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Bard.
Fred Scott seconds.
Seconded by Mr. Scott. One in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Citizens' comments regarding agenda items. Please identify yourself by name and borough, township, and indicate which agenda item you're speaking about. We have come to the portion of the meeting providing an opportunity for public comment. The Board will follow the procedures established in Policy 903, Public Comment in Board Meetings, which is accessible through the district's website. This time is designated for districts and taxpayers to comment on the items listed for action or deliberation on tonight's agenda. All individuals wishing to comment this evening must have completed the document designated for request to comment and submitted the document to the Board Secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Each commenter will preface their comments by announcement of their name and if applicable, group affiliation.
We're just waiting for one member to return.
We're just waiting for one member to return.
Hello, welcome to the Schipensburg area school district planning and action meeting. Prior to the start of this meeting, the board did meet in an executive session to discuss contract matters. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jim Bard.
Here.
Mr. Mike Carey.
Here.
Mr. Levi Kressler.
Here.
Dr. Nathan Goats.
Here.
Dr. Michael Lyman.
Here.
Mr. Kirk Noggle.
Here.
Mr. Fred Scott.
Here.
Mr. Darren Donovan.
Here.
Mrs. Steph Everly.
Here.
And Mr. Leo Blom.
Here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As we begin our deliberations this evening, let us once again be reminded of our duty to represent all of the children of this school community regardless of age, sex, race, or creed, and regardless of need or ability. This meeting is being livestreamed and uploaded to the district's YouTube channel. May we now have a moment of silence to reflect on our thoughts, plans, and actions on behalf of the students in the Schipensburg area school district? May we also have a moment of silence for Mary Jane Foglesong, our graduate of the Schipensburg area high school? Mr. August, are there any changes to this evening's agenda?
No, ma'am.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda as listed?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Bard.
Fred Scott seconds.
Second by Mr. Scott. One in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Citizens' comments regarding agenda items, please identify yourself by name and borough, township, and indicate which agenda item you're speaking about. We have come to the portion of the meeting providing an opportunity for public comment. The board will follow the procedures established in policy nine zero three, public comment in board meetings, which is accessible through the district's website. This time is designated for districts and taxpayers to comment on the items listed for action or deliberation on tonight's agenda. All individuals wishing to comment this evening must have completed the document designated for request to comment and submitted the document to the board secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Each commenter will preface their comments by announcement of their name and if applicable, group affiliation. The public comment period is limited to no more than thirty minutes, and each statement made by the commenter will be limited to three minutes. There will be a second comment period will occur after the items for action or deliberation have been completed. Mr. Hudson. Hello, Sam Hudson. I live in Schipensburg Borough, and I am also here representing the Schipensburg Area Education Association. We're going to reference Agenda Item 5A. I just wanted to begin by acknowledging that we understand the intent behind the proposed job description and the position listed on tonight's agenda under the Action Item 5A Library Support. However, the way it was written in tonight's action agenda could be interpreted as though this role is already being added to our collective bargaining agreement. I would like to clarify that SAEA has not confirmed agreement to this position, and therefore it cannot be incorporated into the CBA unless it goes through the proper process of discussion and approval by our association. Our members have expressed concern about how this is presented in the agenda, and they have asked me to speak tonight to make sure the board understands. While the board can certainly vote on this job description as it stands, the action does not automatically place it into our contract that requires a vote through SAEA, which has not occurred up to this point. We just wanted to ensure transparency in the process so that there's no misunderstanding for you, our staff, or the general public. Thank you. Student representatives.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to start off with high school sports. Boys soccer is eight and two and played York Suburban this afternoon, in which they won two-one. Girls soccer is five and four and plays tomorrow night against Mifflin County. Football is four and one, it's looking strong. Field hockey is five and five. The volleyball team won in their match this Saturday. And lastly, golf was participating in their mid-pen qualifiers today, but I do not have the results of how that went. All I know is that they definitely did better than my triple bogey, so they're doing okay. Cross country is also undefeated right now. In other news, all of the high school clubs are in full swing. The homecoming court forms have been sent out to the senior class, so voting is currently taking place to see who all will be on the 2025 homecoming court. Homecoming itself will be taking place October fourth from seven to ten P.M. In the high school gym, and the theme is masquerade. There is going to be a contest for the most creative mask, which will be announced at the pep rally the Friday before the actual dance. Now going to the middle school. Quiz Bowl is starting this Thursday after school. Clubs started up this month and are off to a successful start. The SAM student council is accepting applications for sixth graders who are interested in joining. A roller skating party is being hosted by the PTO on September twenty-second. Four gifted students attended the first chief science officer training at the CAIU. They have been very pleased with the new bandroom addition, and their sports are off and running. That's all.
Thank you. Superintendent's report.
No report at this time, Severly. I just would want to remind the board, based on the committee of the whole discussion around transportation, we are currently, the last directive from the board was to go out to RFP. Just wanted to make that note to everyone. Thank you.
Moving on to the consent agenda, we have Item 4A, the approval of minutes. 4B is the finance report. 4B1 is the bills of payments and the financial reports. 4C is the request to form a new club, the pickleball club. 4D is the approval of bus drivers, and those names are listed. And then Item 4E, we also have adjustments for the completion of additional courses, retirements, resignations, transfers, completion of ninety, thirty-day probationary periods, substitutes, and mentors. Is there a motion to approve Item 4A through 4E?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Carey.
Second.
Second by Dr. Goats. Discussion.
Caleb, I asked you about audit, and you told me it'll be ready by next?
October thirteenth meeting.
October thirteenth.
Preliminary.
That will tell us how much we have in fund balance, with or without the state money?
No, that'll be in. That'll be in. So it's based off of twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Okay.
That's the audit. So we're not looking at twenty-five, twenty-six current year.
But that'll show all the money we received in twenty-four?
As of July one, it'll show the final balance as of July one, twenty-twenty-five.
Okay, thank you.
I need to make a motion to take 4E, numbers nine and number thirteen separately.
Is there a second to Mr. Donovan's motion to take separately?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Noggle.
What were they again?
Nine and thirteen.
No, no.
It might be easier just to modify the original motion if the person who made the original motion is willing to modify their motion.
So, Mr. Carey, are you willing to modify?
Sure.
Dr. Goats, you're good with that modification as the second?
Yes.
Okay.
What were they again?
Nine and thirteen.
No, no.
It might be easier just to modify the original motion if the person who made the original motion is willing to modify their motion.
So, Mr. Carey, are you willing to modify?
Sure.
Dr. Goats, you're good with that modification as the second?
Yes.
Okay.
So which pieces did you want separate?
So it's a motion to take all of the items except Item 4E, nine and thirteen.
That's what you're voting on right now.
Great.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there a motion to approve Item 4E, nine and thirteen?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Carey.
Second.
Second by Dr. Lyman.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Upstain.
And Mrs. Everly.
Yes.
5A, we have the job description library support. Administration recommends approval of the attached job description for a new supplemental position titled library support. This position will be added into the SAEA contract under supplemental salaries, non-athletic appendix.
And just to reiterate Mr. Hudson's comments, we do need their approval to have that go in.
Is there a motion to approve Item 5A?
So moved.
Motion made by Dr. Goats.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carey. Discussion.
So will that approval come sort of like retroactively, or?
So we're just approving the job description, so that there's other negotiated elements that determine whether it goes into the contract.
This is just the description.
This is just the job description.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 5B, we have the field trip request. The student services department recommends approval of the attached field trip agenda for the fourth and fifth grade gifted students to attend a field trip at Millersville University and the Turkey Hill Experience on October tenth, twenty-twenty-five. Busing will be covered by the student services department, and parents will cover the eighteen fifty for the Turkey Hill Experience for their students. Is there a motion to approve Item 5B?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Carey.
Second.
Second by Mr. Scott. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 5C is the field trip location approval to Totem Pole. Administration recommends approval of the Totem Pole Playhouses, an approved location for field trips. This will be in addition to the already approved field trip handbook. The Totem Pole Playhouse provides students with a chance to experience one of the most highly regarded summer theaters in the United States, known as America's Summer Theater, and appraised by the New York Times as the Cadillac of summer theaters. Is there a motion to approve Item 5C?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Carey.
Fred Scott seconds.
Second by Mr. Scott. Discussion.
So this doesn't list a specific trip? This just opens us up to have?
So, right, to be able to go there, initially, we need to have it on the list. I don't know if I would describe it as a Cadillac. It's cool.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 5D, Ruskinian employer reporting engagement proposal twenty-twenty-five. Administration recommends the approval of the proposal from the Ruskinian Group to complete the Affordable Care Act mandated reporting requirements to meet sections six zero five five and six zero five six of the IRS code. On behalf of the district, the cost of these services for the twenty-five reporting year will be six dollars and fifty cents per ten ninety-five form. Is there a motion to approve Item 5D?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Carey.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bard. Discussion. All in favor?
Hold it, hold it. Can I explain what it's that? Affordable care? What?
So we have to do reporting for the Affordable Care Act requires reporting? So our insurance company does this? We do it, I believe, every year, Fred. It's a federal requirement.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 5E is additional phones. Administration recommends approval to purchase additional phones at the cost of two thousand four hundred and thirty-two dollars. This will increase the monthly cost for licensing by twenty-four dollars. With additional positions moving people around and inaccurate information provided from our previous phone system vendor, we need nineteen additional phones, and the phones will come out of the technology budget. Is there a motion to approve Item 5E?
So moved.
Fred Scott seconds.
Second by Mr. Scott. Discussion. All in favor?
Hold it, hold it. Can I explain what it's that? Affordable care? What?
So we have to do reporting for the Affordable Care Act requires reporting? So our insurance company does this? We do it, I believe, every year, Fred. It's a federal requirement.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 5E is additional phones. Administration recommends approval to purchase additional phones at the cost of two thousand four hundred and thirty-two dollars. This will increase the monthly cost for licensing by twenty-four dollars. With additional positions moving people around and inaccurate information provided from our previous phone system vendor, we need nineteen additional phones, and the phones will come out of the technology budget. Is there a motion to approve Item 5E?
So moved.
Second.
Second by Mr. Scott. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 5E is additional phones. Administration recommends approval to purchase additional phones at the cost of two thousand four hundred and thirty-two dollars. This will increase the monthly cost for licensing by twenty-four dollars. With additional positions moving people around and inaccurate information provided from our previous phone system vendor, we need nineteen additional phones, and the phones will come out of the technology budget. Is there a motion to approve Item 5E?
So moved.
Fred Scott seconds.
Second by Mr. Scott. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 5F is the facilities use agreement with the Schipensburg University Foundation. Administration recommends approval of the facility use agreement with Schipensburg University Foundation to hold interscholastic athletic games at the Rob Athletic Complex on September twenty-ninth, October sixth, and October thirteenth for boys and girls soccer and field hockey senior nights. A total of three contests will be played on the turf field at the Rob Athletic Complex. The athletic department will be paying the cost of the rental, which is four hundred dollars per date, twelve hundred in total. Is there a motion for 5F?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Carey.
Second.
Second by Dr. Goats. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 5G is the Musco change order. Administration and the facilities committee recommends approval of the attached change order for the electrical conduit revision and wiring to pole T1. The cost of the change order is five thousand four hundred and eighty-three dollars and will be paid from the construction budget. Is there a motion to approve Item 5G?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Carey.
Second.
Sorry, Mr. Noggle. Second by Mr. Carey. Discussion.
Did we at that meeting about the finding out if we were responsible? Was it on the program or was it not on the program?
So my understanding is that Tim was to look into that? His recommendation is that we need to do this.
I understand it, but whose fault? It does not, why, if it's on the diagram to be done, why wasn't it done? And if it wasn't on the diagram, I have no problem paying for it. But if it was on there and they're supposed to do it, why are we paying for it?
When talking with Tim today, and he can talk more about this, it wasn't on the original drawing. It was on the, I guess, the revised one that was done later. So this was, they were basing it off of the original drawing, and this conduit wasn't on the original drawing.
But it was on a second one?
It was on the revision. I don't know when the revision was done and when Musco ordered this.
I think wasn't K and W gonna actually look into it? But regardless, we need the box, whether we have to pay.
I understand that, but I'm getting tired of paying for other people's mistakes. If it's on the board, it's on the paper, we gotta do it, but I think we should be reimbursed.
So with it not being on the drawing, if it had been, if they'd been using the revisions ones, then the cost of that would have gone up by this amount, Fred.
No problem. But I want to know specifically that was on or wasn't.
I think Mr. Barwin kind of detailed that. So on the original plans, I guess, they were working from, it was not revised plans. They found that they needed it. When the work was done, they discovered that they hadn't done it based on the original drawings. So it's in addition, you know, it's six, one and a half dozen of the other, Fred, in that if it had been on the, you know, if we had followed the revised drawings, then that price would have gone up.
Who was "we"? Who, when you say "we", if we would have, who was "we"?
The installers.
All right, if they would have followed the plans, the revised plan, that would have been, it would have been a done, right?
Right, but we would have paid for it on that end, Fred.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Item 5H is the PC zero one one track settlement change order. Administration and the facilities committee recommends authorizing payment of the remaining eleven thousand two hundred and sixty-one dollars of the attached change order upon ECI's completion of the work to address the secondary deficient area of the track in the same location. Both the district solicitor and design engineers support this course of action, and it will be paid for from the construction budget. Is there a motion to approve Item 5H?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Noggle.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carey. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay. No.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Carey.
Yes.
Mr. Kressler.
Yes.
Dr. Goats.
Yes.
Dr. Lyman.
Yes.
Mr. Noggle.
Yes.
Mr. Scott. Having trouble with another one. Yeah, go ahead. This endangers the track season next year, yes. I vote yes. Mr. Bard.
No.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
And Mrs. Everly.
No.
Seven yes, two no. Mission passed.
Discussion agenda. Item 6A is the music item for disposal. Administration recommends approval to dispose of outdated music resources that are no longer used. The list is attached. 6B is the sheet music for disposal. Administration recommends the disposal of sheet music that is no longer used by the music department. 6C is the youth truth survey. Administration recommends approval to enter into a three-year agreement with youth truth survey. The agreement does not contain a termination clause as needed. And youth truth is a tool used for gathering and acting on student and stakeholder feedback around the areas of engagement and culture, and the cost per year is fifteen thousand two hundred for student, family, and staff surveys on a year-long subscription. Item 6D is the non-public transportation contract with CBCS and FCA. Administration recommends approval of the agreement with the Cumberland Valley Christian School and the Freedom Christian Academy. 6E is the facilities use contract and fees. And administration recommends approval of the attached updated facilities use contract and fees. Any questions, comments, discussion around those items?
Yeah, so, I'm not sure. Leslie, did you give us this paper?
I did, yes.
I figured you did. So the facilities use, I guess, you know, we had, I have the breakdown from the last meeting of all that stuff. I guess I just want to know, and just verify, like, the stadium is all new, obviously. It's brand-new, newly constructed, and that's what this paper is about, and how we compare to other districts and what they charge for community groups. But is everything else staying the same, I guess? So if, like, let's use the example, if SAEA paid X amount of dollars once our board revised our policy, I think in twenty-twenty-three, that's the exact same, they shouldn't pay anymore in twenty-twenty-five?
Yes, the only thing that was updated was just adding the fees for the stadium.
Okay, all right, and? And the use of contracts.
Yes, that is true, yes.
And it, because it does look fairly comparable, and in some cases, way cheaper than other districts. I know the topic of lights has come up with people, organizations using it. So I think that's just a conversation that, you know, I don't know. I don't know the financials of the organizations, like, obviously, we can't just turn the lights on for free. But at the same time, I want everybody to have access to all of these facilities. That's the point of these things. So I guess maybe when someone says they would like to use the stadium for an event, like a youth soccer league or something, maybe they play, like, one game late afternoon
Yeah, I mean, it's a board decision. And in the, in the suggest, the drafted contract, it does say that, you know, that the board could negotiate fees if necessary with other groups.
And then how do, how, you might've said this two weeks ago, uh, let's say that an organization wants to reserve the stadium. How were they, or who, who was their point of contact for that now?
So there's a, once this would be approved, they would, um, reach out to our, um, director of operations and he has all the paperwork and everything, and it'll be available on the website.
Okay.
I, on that point, if there is a team of Shippensburg, mostly Ch- Shippensburg School, but not condoned by Shippensburg School District, but all Shippensburg stu- uh, students, I guess, who were kids, children of Shippensburg District, would, what would they fall under?
Well, they're a nonprofit community group, right?
Yes.
So they're group B. Same as the other nonprofit community groups.
Okay.
Similar to SAIA.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. So it's just because we have some organization out there having nothing but Shippensburg students and kids in it, so they would fit under that current. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments regarding discussion items? That brings us to the last citizens' comments, and I see that there are several regarding the non-agenda items. Just please identify yourself by name and borough, township, all comments to the board as a whole, and make sure that they are in the form of a statement. Questions will be taken under advisement. Responses to questions will be offered after due deliberation. It will be provided by the superintendent at the direction of the board within a few days of the board meeting. You'll be allowed three minutes for your comments and comment is, comments relative to private student matters or personal issues should be directed to the appropriate school authority outside of this meeting and the presiding officer reserves the right to interrupt or terminate a participant's statement when the statement is too lengthy, personally directive, abusive, obscene or irrelevant. Thank you for your cooperation in this matter. Um, next we have Ms. Nyman.
Good evening. My name is Katrina Nyman and I teach fourth through fifth grade orchestra, fourth and fifth grade chorus and fifth grade band at G Blues, fifth grade band at the intermediate school and sixth grade band and jazz band at the middle school. I do not feel supported or motivated by the district in light of recent, of the recent negotiations update. It is stressful and anxiety inducing, um, to get these updates. How do you expect teachers to feel motivated and supported when they've been working without a contract? Despite this, I am proud of my colleagues for their unwavering solidarity and support despite having worked without a contract since June. They continue to maintain the highest level of professionalism and dedication to the education of our students. Our students remain some of the highest performing compared to comparable school districts and our teachers deserve a fair and reasonable contract to reflect that. With all of that said, I have two more remaining questions. How does the lack of a contract align with the district's stated commitments to students and families? And finally, what message do you think you're sending to our children when their teachers are not valued through a contract? Thank you.
Ms. Laskowski?
And I apologize if I butchered that last name.
I misspelled it once. Had a fever of a hundred and four.
Um, hi, my name's Carol Laskowski. I'm a resident of Hopewell Township, Newburgh, um, as my mailing address. Uh, and I'm here as a taxpayer and a concerned citizen and also a parent of two Shippensburg area high school graduates who are doing exceptionally well now, both in graduate school, one getting a doctorate in economics, the other just starting a master's degree in communication studies. And they, and I, as a parent, owe that foundation to the excellent education they had in this school district. And so, um, as a parent, also as a professional who has worked, um, without a contract and who has gone through difficult contract negotiations, and an educator who is privileged to be able to work with some of our Shippensburg high school students through the Ship Starts Program at the university. Um, I'm concerned about the rate of contract negotiations and I'm wondering how the board and the administration believes that it can maintain its reputation and the student performances that I've just talked about if our teachers continue to feel undervalued and contract negotiations do not resume in good faith. Thank you.
Peyton Schuman?
My name is Peyton Schuman. I live on Red Hawk Drive and I'm speaking as a class of twenty twenty-five graduate of the Shippensburg Area School District and I'm the daughter of a teacher of the school district. And my only question for you is, do you recognize that delaying a fair contract undermine, under, undermines teacher morale and could ultimately hurt student outcomes? Thank you.
Is there anyone else who didn't sign up that wanted to say anything?
I was on there twice.
Yes, you are. Come on up, Sam.
I know, you know, I don't like speaking publicly, so thank you for trying. Um, I am Sam Hudson, again, Shippensburg, uh, borough. President of the Shippensburg Area Education Association. I stand before you today, speaking on behalf of the two hundred sixty-one teachers and educators within the district. I wish I could stand before you with some positive news. Last week was a difficult week for many reasons. We have been working hard in the classroom, educating and meeting our students' needs. Yet a month into the school year, we're still working under the terms of an expired contract. On Tuesday, we had gone into negotiations optimistic. We felt we were very close to a contractual agreement that is fair to the staff, students, parents of this community. But the board's bargaining team seems like it would rather drag out the process, which in turn punishes teachers rather than, rather than supporting them by working together with us. It's not productive. Last week's bargaining meeting left us feeling that we have no choice but to move forward with filing for state sanctioned fact finding. It will be an arduous proj- process for both SAEA and this district. But our members are standing strong in solidarity and will continue to do so. At a time when teachers are leaving the profession in droves and fewer people are willing to enter it, we need a contract that allows us to continue the job that we love and give you the ability to recruit the best talent out there. Thank you.
All right, on to board comments. Mr. Nagle?
No, I'll pass.
Dr. Lyman?
Why'd you start on this side? Um. No, I don't think I have anything.
Mr. Scott?
There to here? I, I have a, I don't have, I have one concern. The, um, students at high school that are leaving at the end of the day, they're, the ones on the bicycles and the skateboards are riding in the middle of Everly Drive and become a, have, have become a hazard. I've observed it. I've been informed that one person on a skateboard was run, the skateboard was run over by a van or a bus up there on Everly Drive. I don't know what we can do about it, but it's a safety issue that we need to, if it keeps up, we may have to look at banning bicycles and skateboards whenever, and not there in that area and endanger a child getting hurt. That's all I have.
Mr. Carey?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Kressler?
Uh, Leo, was it two weeks ago you weren't here?
Uh, yeah, it was.
You're not gonna be here. You're gonna send me a text so I can get ready.
Oh, so you can plan? All right.
But I did find out you did a great job on the, uh, high school sports update, but, uh, tomorrow, boys cross country, well, I guess girls would run as well.
They play Big Spring, right?
Yeah, to, to meet against Big Spring, it's for the division championship. If we win tomorrow, I don't know the last time we won a cross-country championship, but, uh, race tomorrow home, four o'clock, I would assume.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, they would love a lot of support from the community. Um, and then the two other, three other things I had. So I'm a parent of a kid at, uh, the intermediate school and we, as a board member, I have seen the, uh, excitement and, uh, that, that our band community has. So I, my, my oldest daughter is engaging in the violin this year and the excitement is just as mu- it's just as great at the intermediate level, I think, as the high school level. So, um, I'm not sure, so sure how I'll feel about it when I hear a violin every night, but, uh, it's, it's just, it's wonderful. Um, and I'm glad that we have that, that program. Uh, I went to the Greyhound Golf Founda- Foundation Tournament Sunday morning. I, I don't know the exact number that was raised, but I'm fairly certain that I can confidently say that it has raised more money than any year that we've had up to this point. I don't know how many years it's been. So I just want to say thanks to, oh, I think there was around a hundred golfers, um, that were there. It was a great turnout on Sunday morning. The weather was not so great. I was standing with Mr. August, somebody made a fifty-three foot putt like ten minutes in. It was like a great start, but, um, it's, it was my first time there, not playing in it. Uh, but it was just, it's a really cool event and it's just, you know, it's a nice little fundraiser and a reminder, uh, about all the great things the foundation supports the district with. And finally, I skipped this two weeks ago and we've had so many, this is the last SiteLogic update was tonight.
Uh, knock on wood, yes.
So, uh, I have got so many compliments from people about the new cafeteria lobby area with the seating and the, the concession stand area and all that. So I just think, I just wanted to say that, um, I know the booster clubs greatly support having a space. Uh, and I think the students, I've had like random students tell me like they.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'm, I'm, I'm enjoying it very much, yeah.
Yeah, it's much better than a hard chair, so, uh, but I just wanted to say that because I think that is like, you know, when I supported that, it was something, when you walk right into that door, you see that and it's much more welcoming. So I'm, I'm happy that we were able to get that, that project in. Other than that, I think that is it.
For the record, it was not me who made the fifty-three.
No, 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 no. Not, not you.
Clara, clear on that.
Mr. Bard?
Uh, not a comment, but I got a question for you, Mr. August. Uh, what would it cost or could you find out if? I know Nancy Grayson's got the push button. If a teacher gets, is in trouble, they can push the button and it notifies the office immediately that they could send somebody in. What, what would it cost for like the James Bird or, you know, is it, was that big money? I don't even remember.
Uh, I, I think we looked at it in, uh, facilities a while back. Um, I can get, you know, we can.
Check on that for me, please. And that's it.
Dr. Goetz?
Um, I, I don't know anything about the incident that, um, Mr. Scott was referring to, but if indeed there is, um, trouble with conflicts between bicycles and cars, then perhaps it would be time to consider banning the cars. That's it.
Mr. Donovan?
No, thank you.
Um, nothing for me tonight either. Um, information date savers, uh, September twenty-fifth, we have the facilities committee meeting. October thirteenth, we have committee of the whole planning and action meeting. October thirteenth is Columbus Day, no school for teachers and students. October twenty-second, a two-hour early dismissal. October third, we have homecoming game and the pep rally and October fourth is the homecoming dance.
All right, Ms., one question. I heard Leo say pep rally. Is the pep rally gonna be outside at the stadium pending good weather?
Well, I have no idea. I can ask.
Is that something that is?
Um, I, I mean, that is the one place that the entire school could fit.
I know that, that would be wonderful.
I'm not sure what the plans are at the high school for that.
I know in the past, it's been like, um, ninth and eleventh graders and then tenth to twelfth graders that they separated, so maybe all once, I don't know.
That would be all.
Superintendent, didn't, uh, just a question. Something about a door lock you wanted our approval for? Do you still need it? Don't need it?
Uh, we, not at this point, Mr. Scott. Thank you, though.